How you get Whippit out here?
Hammond City Council Public Hearing Agenda, April the eighth, twenty twenty-five, five thirty P M. Roll call please.
Councilman Wells.
Here.
Councilman Diveterio.
Here.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilman Andrews.
Present. Public hearing item number one.
An ordinance request for a conditional use variance by Chris Ruffin to allow a mobile home in RS-three zoning. The property is one zero six Alexander Road located in District One. Charles Barsha.
As I said during the introduction, a couple of weeks ago, this is a request to place a mobile home on a property that is currently zoned RS-three. It went through the Planning and Zoning Commission. It was voted five-zero in favor. And are you here representing the property? I'll turn it over to you.
Anything you had want to say, Chris?
All right, I'd say that everything that owns zoning me.
All right.
Uh, yeah, I'm trying to, uh, put me a mobile home on back there on that property.
Okay, all right. Is there anyone else from the public here on this item? Any questions or concerns? Thank you. Hammond City Council Regular Session Agenda. Five thirty-one. P M. Roll call please.
Councilman Wells.
Present.
Councilman Diveterio.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilman Andrews.
Present. Stand for our prayer, please. Most gracious, loving heavenly Father, we thank you on this day. We give you glory and honor and praise because this is a day that you have made. And we rejoice and we are glad about it. Father God, we thank you for helping strengthen our bodies. We thank you, Father God, that in this day and time in which we live right now, Father God, we continue to seek you in all of our ways, that you would direct our path. We thank you right now for your grace and your mercy. We come right now, Father God, lifting up our city, our state and our country. We ask you to continue to touch Hammond right now, Father God, continue to touch those that live in it. I ask you to continue to bless our council, our council members, continue to bless their districts right now, Father God. Continue to give them the wisdom and knowledge to continue to move forward as we continue to lead our city. I ask you to continue to bless our city administration, touch our mayor, continue to move in his heart and mind. I ask you to continue to cover our police and fire department as they continue to protect us. Continue to bless every city employee in the city of Hammond. Father God, for we know that we are not a perfect people, but we strive for perfection. So that on this evening in heaven, Father, we thank you that everything will be done decent, order pleasing in your sight. Therefore, you will get all glory, all honor and all praise because it all belongs to you. In Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen. At this time, I ask that all active, uh, veterans, military, please render the proper salute. I present allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I call for a motion to approve our March twenty twenty-five, twenty, uh, twenty twenty-five, twenty-five meeting minutes.
So move.
Second.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Stand.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye. Final adoption of ordinance number one.
Final adoption of an ordinance request for a conditional use variance by Chris Ruffin to allow a mobile home in RS-three zoning. The property is one zero six Alexander Road located in District One.
Again, as we just discussed, this was reviewed by planning and zoning and approved five to zero. Representative is here from the property.
Is there anyone else from the public that have any questions or concerns about this item? Anyone from the council? Any unreadiness before I call for a vote? I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Introduction of ordinance none. Resolution. Oh, business. Number one.
A resolution authorizing La Caireta to, excuse me, located at one zero eight Northwest Railroad Avenue, Hammond, Louisiana, to close traffic to West Charles Street in front of the restaurant and in the south of the Casa de Fresca parking lot, Monday, May fifth, twenty twenty-five, from eleven A M. to ten P M., as well as authorizing La Caireta to obtain a waiver of the open container law for our annual Cinco de Mayo celebration, Monday, May fifth, twenty twenty-five, from eleven A M. to ten P M. In the closed areas of West Charles Street, in front of the restaurant and in the south of the Casa de Fresca parking lot. Kylie Payne.
Kylie Payne, one oh eight Northwest Railroad Avenue. We're just wanting to do our usual Cinco things, where we put those barricades by the post office, by the train tracks, stage out front, outside bar with a tent. And then music is going from lunch to dinner.
What time is dinner? What time is the music ending?
It is going to end at nine P M. And then once traffic kind of gets, you know, done, we'll pull those barricades up and we'll have an officer that night as well.
And that's for the music? Didn't they cut the music down to about six last year?
That was, it was on Sunday.
Sunday, okay.
We did, we did do that. One thing I'm curious about is the open container on here as its word is until ten P M. But, um, you don't necessarily need it that late. The ten, the open container, I mean, the streets, you probably need to close till ten.
I just kind of lumped it together, but we are more than willing to roll that back to nine if that makes you guys more comfortable.
Is there anyone from the public on this item? Any other questions or concerns from anyone from the council?
Yeah, one question. She sitting here saying nine o'clock. How the clients gonna know nine o'clock?
We can advertise that via social media and, you know, push that let them know music and outside bar ends at nine P M.
Thank you.
Any other unreadiness before I call for a vote? Pleasure of the council.
I make a motion to approve, however, changing it to nine P M. for the open container waiver.
I second it.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrew.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution number two.
A resolution accepting a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant from Tangi Fohoa Parish Government for improvements to West Minnesota Park Road, two approving a cash match of up to three thou, three hundred, I'm sorry, three hundred and seventy thousand from the Grant Match Fund, and three authorizing the mayor or his designees to complete and sign related document, documents. Charles Barsha.
Uh, as I explained at the last meeting, um, this is a project to improve that stretch of West Minnesota Park that connects Southwest Railroad by the mall, uh, basically to where the Home Depot is. Uh, road is in really rough shape. Um, in consultate, in some consultation with the parish and with our engineer, uh, the recommendation was to go with concrete due to the amount of traffic that that road receives. Um, there's also a plan if we go with concrete to be able to maintain access to some of the businesses that would be affected by the partial road closure. I understand with asphalt, that becomes a little more difficult because there's underground drainage and other infrastructure. Um, the parish has graciously given us two hundred and fifty thousand dollars toward this project, can only be used for this project. Um, and we are prepared to match three hundred and seventy thousand, um, from the Grant Match Fund. Um, there is also, um, pricing for an asphalt overlay, but that again is not the preference, um, of the administration or our engineers or the parish.
Is there anyone else here from the public on this particular item? Councilman Wells?
Yes. Thank you all, Mr. President. I'd like to say thank you to President Kip. Two weeks ago, I wanted to table this matter. It looked like it was about to get out of hand. I'm saying this here, when I want to table something, I have reasons why I want to table this matter. And the reason I tabled this matter, because I wanted all of us to sit down, the mayor, Charles, uh, Robbie Miller, Joe Thomas, Chuck, and I wanted one city council person to be there with me. And I wanted Ms. Lisa there with me, but she had something to do, so that's why she couldn't show up. And I want to thank the parish president for giving us the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I know this road need to be done, but I will say this here. The parish president said this here. I told him the roads haven't been done in Hammond in two years. He say the road's gonna be overlaid this year. And I said that because we could focus on one road, but yet forget about all the other roads in Hammond. Thank you, Mr. President, again, for allowing this to take place. And one of the guys at the meeting said this here after the meeting. He says, Councilman Wells, I never thought I'd see you guys in the room together, being able to have a meeting. And I tell everybody, you don't know what my God can do. And I said this at the meeting, and I did tell a lie at the meeting. Now, let me get this straight. I told him I don't read the Bible, but I do read the Bible. And this what, this what the Lord kept putting on me. Build your house on a solid foundation. And I'm saying that to say this here, this road been having a lot of issues because the foundation wasn't solid. And that's what nobody could ever say in that meeting. That's all they wanted to hear. Tell me why we keep having problems. And in the process of doing this road, not only District Three, every district gonna benefit from this road. So when that budget come, don't sit here and holler, we gave you three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. You didn't give me this. This for everybody gonna benefit from it. President Kip, thank you once again. This wouldn't have been done without you spearheading it and letting me know how to make this process work. Thank you, Ms. Lisa, for making your calls, your emails, for everything that you had to do. Thank you once again.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else on this item?
I just want to know, good evening, Tracy Wells, Hammond, Louisiana. How much do we have in the Grant Match Fund?
We currently have just under eight hundred thousand.
Eight hundred thousand. Okay, thank you.
I make a motion to approve. Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Resolution, new business. Resolution number one.
A resolution to authorize the purchase of a twenty twenty-five F-one-fifty extended cab truck for the Parks and Grounds Department from Bill Hood Ford. Total cost forty-two thousand one hundred and seven dollars. State contract four-four zero 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 two-three-seven-nine-three. Charles Barsha.
This is to replace a vehicle that was wrecked last year, was hit by the train. So we're asking for the council's approval. Uh, there is money in the streets, I'm sorry, the Parks and Grounds Department's budget to purchase the vehicle. We're not pulling money from another part of the budget for the purchase.
Was there insurance money received?
There was insurance money received. It was approximately twenty-four thousand, not enough to buy a brand-new vehicle, so they're gonna come up with the difference.
Stanley Campbell, the District One. Uh, Charles, I had a quick question. Can you take me through the, uh, the due diligence process of, uh, after you guys receive a request from a department head for vehicles? What's the next step? What's the due diligence done by the administration?
So, so typically, requests like this would go to the administration, to myself, the mayor. We'll discuss it with the department head. In this case, like I said, there was a vehicle that was, was totaled in a, in the va, in an accident. Uh, the city did receive insurance money to replace it, however, that replacement amount was not sufficient to buy a new vehicle. Um, as I said the last meeting, we kind of wait to see where budgets are around this time of year. Um, if there's money left in the budget where we can find money to, to purchase the vehicle, um, then we'll do that. Um, some of these vehicles are budgeted earlier. Um, they're budgeted when we budget for, you know, for the fiscal year. Um, I also understand that Ford has only recently begun taking orders again. Um, so I've gotten a little bit off your question, but generally, the quest comes to the mayor, myself. We discuss it with the department head. Um, one of us, usually myself, will talk with our accounting director, make sure that there's money in the budget to cover the purchase. We then go to the purchasing department, um, and they will solicit quotes or, or look at, say, contract, um, and then we, we put everything together and bring it to the council.
Okay. I was asking in this discussion, we weren't just pulling it as in to the council. On the, on the order sheet, it has a couple of different things on it. I want to get the clarity on it. Um, for the color upcharge, we're not being charged the color upcharge to make the tires in red, correct?
No, no.
Okay, so all those, all those additional options, that's not in the package? Is this in the same line? I guess that's why I'm asking that question.
No, I, I, I would guess that that's a holdover for maybe when, I'm not sure. Uh, I'm thinking it's maybe for the fire department when they may have been requesting red. I'm not sure, but, um, no, this, this vehicle was not gonna be red. It's gonna be white with the red logo on it.
Okay, in this situation, do you think?
In this situation, do you think we have vehicles, um, adequate enough vehicles to actually redistribute the wealth of vehicles that we already have? Uh, some of the calculations that I've done, uh, we got two hundred and forty-five vehicles according to your, uh, online numbers. Uh, currently, the administration has three hundred and twenty-six employees and two hundred and forty-five vehicles. So is there any way that we can redistribute that? Some of the situations that I'm looking at on here, the police, the police department has a hundred and twenty-seven vehicles and a hundred and fifteen employees. Now, with those hundred and twenty-seven vehicles, they only had a hundred and seven vehicles last year. So there was twenty vehicles from the, from one fiscal year to another that was ordered for that one department. Now, would it surprise you to know that that's the single largest increase in the, the history of what you guys have been mapping and been actually keeping, keeping track of?
That would not, because if I recall correctly, um, the police department approached the council about purchasing vehicles the previous fiscal year, and that request was denied. So they were actually purchasing more vehicles the subsequent year, which would have been basically double the number.
No, a, a, according to the budget, I'm going by the budget that you guys submitted to the council that's online. So according to the budget, um, the last time that you had this many vehicles in one year was in two thousand eight, between two thousand eight and two thousand nine, fif, fiscal year, and that was fifteen vehicles. Typically, you guys have been doing maybe four to, four to, three to four vehicles every year that we're looking at on there. And there's a huge influx of vehicles that are needed. So I said all that to say this, is there a way that we can re, instead of ordering new vehicles, can we redistribute the vehicles that we currently have in the fleet?
So, uh, the short answer is we do do that. Um, so.
Why can't we do that in this situation?
Well, because in this particular department, as I learned this morning, some of the vehicles are, you know, from, from the early two thousands. That there's, there's vehicles, they have a vehicle in their fleet currently in, in Parks and Grounds that was a police vehicle, it was a Durango. We haven't bought Durangos for the police department. I, I don't know if we bought those in the time.
You bought a Durango in March.
I'm sorry.
Well, two Durangos in March.
This is the old Durango.
Okay, but let me, let me, I'm sorry, I ain't mean to cut you off. I'm gonna, I'm gonna stay within my three minutes. I'm gonna make sure I don't go over. Um, the, the fire department, we've got twenty-six vehicles, seventy-five employees. Building department, you have five vehicles and ten employees. Um, the gar, the garage, you have three employees with four vehicles. Um, the streets and, the streets, you have twenty-three vehicles with sixteen employees. Grounds department, you have sixteen vehicles with twenty employees. Recreation department, you have four vehicles with eight employees. Water and sewage, you have thirty-seven vehicles and thirty-seven, uh, employees. Airport, you have three vehicles and five employees.
I, I would need to look at the, those numbers. I do know that, and I'm not, I'm not looking at what you're looking at, but sometimes what's listed as a vehicle is not a vehicle. It's, it could be a trailer. It could be a piece of heavy equipment like a, like a backhoe. So it, I, I think that those numbers are misleading in the sense that it suggests that we have more vehicles than we have employees. I, I think some of those vehicles are actually not like cars or police units or fire engines or trucks. They're, they're trailers, they're backhoes, they're excavators, that sort of thing. We have, we have water trucks and we have, uh, street sweepers, vehicles that are not used on a regular basis, right, as, as employee vehicles. They're used for specific tasks.
Okay.
Dump trucks, that sort of thing.
Once again, I think we can, we need to clarify that.
Yeah.
Um, so this, the council, we're asking them to make decisions based upon the documents that you guys provide for them. So I think they need the clarity to understand exactly what you guys are seeking to do. And on another issue, um, here, we're ordering a vehicle here in, what's it, April now? Uh, it's common knowledge that the best time to purchase a vehicle, especially trucks, is in December. It's the end of the year. And the sales team are trying to get rid of a lot of different vehicles and they're trying to make room for the new, uh, the new models. So I'd recommend that even when we're putting these requisites in, um, once, once the budget comes out, that we actually try to push them through in the December area where we can get a better deal. And as I said last time, be good fiduciaries and, you know, be physically responsible. That's all I got.
Is there anyone else on this line item? Any other questions or concerns from anyone on the council? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Resolution number two.
A resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract on behalf of the city of Hammond with Lamb Food Service in the estimate, estimated annual amount of seventy-five thousand four hundred and forty dollars. Charles Barsha.
This is food for our jail. Um, my understanding is that we, we've actually looked at, um, purchasing the food ourselves and supplying it to the jail that would require storage space, freezer space, et cetera. Um, this actually turns out to be more economical way to do that. Um, lamb food is, is a merger. Um, they used to be pond food, which is out of Ponchatoula, but my understanding is that company has been merged into this larger company. So, um, we will be being serviced locally. It's just that the company's headquarters, I believe, are in Lafayette now.
Is there anyone here on this item from the public? Any questions or concerns from anyone from the council? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
No.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Resolution number three.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to renew insurance coverage for the city of Hammond for the period of May first, twenty twenty-five, through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Don Steele.
Good evening. Don Steele, one eighteen Southwest Railroad Avenue, Steele Insurance Services here in downtown Hammond. Uh, I won't bore you with going through details as we've done every year the last twenty-one years. You know what the packages are. There are no changes to the package policy, uh, on page two. There's nothing really changed on page three. Same coverage as, as expiring. So we're, we're blessed that we have, still have a carrier that, that likes us. We had a pretty good loss-free year, not loss-free, but comparatively loss-free year in our package. It went well. On page four, you have your automobile, which is the fire units. The fire trucks, as you recall, are separated from the rest of the package. Uh, we did have one new fire truck this year added to the policy. We moved our workers' comp last year to LWCC. It's a five-year program. Uh, as you can see, that we've estimated the future dividends. I think they'll come out much better in the future. As we grow, they grow. So it's, it, it should work out well for us. I, I do believe. The first dividend will come out here shortly. We're expecting about sixty, sixty-one thousand. Next page, page five, there's nothing new on there. Uh, we still have to keep the workers' compensation bond until we clear up all of the self-insured fund losses that we had. So, uh, hopefully, we can get rid of that in the next couple of years. Uh, your next page is six, with the equipment floater and commercial property at forty-six million dollars in commercial property. Uh, we have it split into many different carriers. I think it would, you'd have to go all the way to the very end to see all of the insurance companies that are participating in the property insurance. But we have quite a few. Property insurance rates did go down this year. Reinsurance went down. So we benefited from that, had a thirteen percent decrease in premium. So that was, that was a nice buyback, if you will. The only new thing that I, I have to show you is on page seven, uh, the insurance companies provided us with, uh, some terrorism quotes. I don't know if y'all have any interest in terrorism quotes. Um, I haven't spoken to the mayor directly about, about them. The, uh, insurance companies are starting to worry about them because terrorism is turning into a serious problem across the country. So, um, they had a forty-six million dollar with a ten thousand deductible for eight thousand seven, six eight seventy-eight, and then we have a twenty-five million limit with a ten thousand deductible for five thousand three twenty-three. Other than that, our budget increased three million. We have thirty more employees. Uh, we have a new fire truck, uh, two-point-seven million dollar increase in payroll, and we had a rate decrease in commercial property. And I'm open to questions.
Anyone from the council have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Don, for reaching out earlier. And we was able, I was able to ask my question. You was able to answer. Thank you so much.
You're welcome, sir.
Anyone from the public have any questions on this item? Pleasure of the council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Don.
Thank you all, and you have a good evening.
You too. Thank you, Mr. Don.
Councilman, Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Resolution number four.
A resolution authorizing Planet Recession Inc. to make repairs to Clark Park Playground following the fire that damaged the playground. The cost of repair is estimated at seventy-five thousand dollars. Funds will come from the Clark Park Improvement, um, number four-two-zero-five-zero-zero-zero-zero dash five-seven-zero-two-nine-five-dash-one-two-three-six. Charles.
Um, I think we all know that we unfortunately had a fire, um, in Clark Park Playground several weeks ago. Um, we were able to get out there and do an assessment of the damage. We have approximately forty thousand dollars of equipment damage and an estimated thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars in, uh, safety surfacing damage. Um, if there's a silver lining, it's that we do have some funds left over from a pre, previous allocation for park improvements in Clark Park, um, so we can cover this out of, out of that balance. We've got about a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars in that project account to cover this potential seventy-five thousand dollar, uh, repair replacement.
Uh, as disappointing as this is, there was a fund balance because we want to work on some improvements, but, um, uh, the residents have reached out really disappointed about this, uh, brand-new little toddler playset that, that burned. And, uh, thank you to the administration and the, um, the rec department for securing everything so that they didn't have to keep the whole playground hell, um, closed this whole time, but it's now secure. The other, the other playset is available for play and we want to get this fixed as quick as possible so that the. so that the kids have a place to play in the summer.
Okay. Anyone from the public on this item?
I have a question. I think it's good that the playground equipment is going to be replaced, but my question is, I think the council has asked before, can insurance cover equipment? And the answer is no. So, was that looked into, or like, have you all actually reached out? And I should have asked that question when Mr. Steele was here.
He just left, yeah.
Because I did some research, and equipment can be covered, but I'm not sure under, like, I don't know the terminology for it. That's number one. Number two is, last year, we spent ninety-two thousand dollars to replace Jackson Park. So, we have a problem if we cannot really spend our money for our kids to have good facilities and not protect those facilities. Because between Jackson Park and Clark Park, that's a lot of money for a brand-new structures. So, I know at the last meeting, you guys mentioned cameras. I'm not sure if the cameras were visible to that, but if we could look into maybe having clearer pictures so somebody can be held accountable as well, because that's a lot of money. But I mean, I agree with the replenishment of the structure, but we have to do better with protecting our playgrounds and the equipment.
So I can speak directly to the second part of that, the cameras. I've already met with our IT department. We've identified a location near the playground that has electricity, where we can put cameras that will have a very unobstructed view of the playground. And we're actively looking at what we can do in other parks to also provide the same level of protection for our playground structures. They are very expensive. It is extremely unfortunate and very disheartening to me personally, because I've been heavily involved in these projects, including building some of these with my own hands, along with other volunteers. So it's very disheartening when we see the actions of one or two people really, you know, upsetting it for everybody, particularly our kids.
And that arson is done by juveniles using gasoline or something. I mean, yes, I'm glad the cameras are working, however, even with a camera, in this particular incident, they lit the thing up and used flame-increasing substances to basically burn it as quick as possible. I don't know where they stand on catching and identifying the juveniles and then holding parents accountable. I know that's difficult. Who has seventy thousand dollars? Are they homeowners? Then you go against their homeowner association. Those are all liability-type questions that I think are hard to recover any funds, but I want the park opened back up.
Mr. Charles asks a question. Look, the cameras, are the cameras actually working in the park?
Yes, the cameras are working in the park. My understanding is the camera that was nearest the playground was, the view was obstructed. There's a tree nearby that was obstructing the view. IT has since gone out and tried to reposition the camera. I think it has a better view than it had before. It's not as obstructed, but it's still, I'm not sure that it would have shown a whole lot. You see, from the view that the camera has, you see more of the main play structure in the front and less of what's in the back, and that's where this structure was that was destroyed. The location that we're looking at for putting the cameras would be to the east of the play structure and would have, would appear to be an unobstructed view of the entire playground. It would actually be a little bit closer to it. It's about seventy-five feet away, I think. So, that's the plan right now, is to place a camera on that pole. We're also, I think, going to maybe take advantage of the opportunity to have another camera on that same pole facing the back of the baseball field. So we'd be kind of killing two birds with one stone. We'd have good views of the rear of the baseball field and the large part of the playground.
When you say a tree, Charles, do you act, a tree or the tree limbs?
There is a tree that is planted right behind the restroom facility. The camera's on the corner of the restroom facility, and it seems like this tree has kind of grown out in front of the camera. So, they've made some adjustments to the camera. I think they maybe trimmed the tree back a bit so it has a better view. But again, I don't know how much it would have caught of this incident, because the small play structure is kind of tucked away behind the larger play structure in the front.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
My next question to follow up with it. So when we put these structures out, and they go out to put the cameras out, it would seem to me that they would do a better assessment of where to put the camera from the start.
The camera, that camera was put there particularly because everyone was worried about the restroom. So the focus of that camera was for people congregating around the restroom where there's a light, and there were some people with gunshots. So it wasn't that the focus was the playground, because we didn't think we had a problem with the playground, but this taught us that we did have a problem with the playground, so I guess we need a second camera.
I guess what I was, you know, trying to understand was, the question came about, you know, you said something about the tree limb, you thought it might have been trimmed back, what? It really wasn't, you know, I would hope with seventy or eighty thousand dollar worth equipment being damaged, that it would have been kind of like, you know, priority at least confirmed if that tree limb was cut back. I mean, it wouldn't have been, it sounded good what you're saying, I'm just trying to say that. You know, I would have hoped that it would have been like, oh yeah, we trimmed that tree the following day, I know for a fact, or that, you know, it wasn't trimmed because it wouldn't have done any good anyway. So I mean, it just seemed kind of very vague to where like, we're not talking about a bicycle getting stolen.
So I have not been out there myself to look at the tree, so I can't say for a hundred percent certainty it was trimmed back. I have seen an angle from the camera since it's been adjusted, and I can tell you that it's much better angle. It covers the front of the restroom building and the playground. But again, even at that angle with no obstruction or little obstruction, the main play structure is in the foreground, the smaller play structure that was destroyed is behind it. So I'm not sure how much that particular camera, which is the nearest camera to the playground, would have caught. That's why I asked IT to look at other locations in the park. We quickly identified a pole that's providing light for the rear of the baseball field that's essentially right to the east of the playground. There's nothing between that pole and the playground, so we'll have a very good, unobstructed view of the entire playground.
Yeah. I mean, you know, we got this, if we can't get the equipment insured, you know, I mean, I think it'd be worth spending a few extra hundred dollars on getting more heads out there for cameras, like on all of, I mean, we ain't talking about, I mean, it's, they're not that pricey. I mean, even if it's a couple thousand dollars, I mean, get the heads up where they're actually clear monitoring all the equipment, especially if it's not insurable. I mean, it'd be worth spending an extra few thousand dollars making sure that hundreds of thousands dollars worth of equipment is protected and actually has a view of all angles. I mean, it's been going on for a while, and I mean, every park should have been camera heads all over the place after Jackson Park got burned out. That was the first one, which, you know, I wanted, you know, lighting back there and everything else, but, you know, I don't know where that happened or whatnot with that, but, you know, I mean, that's, hopefully, it doesn't hit another park before we get some more heads.
You got the lighting back there?
I don't think I have lighting back there yet. Now, did y'all ever install the lighting in Jackson Park?
That was part of the park improvement funds that were allocated to that park. I don't know where that is in process.
Okay.
I know that, the last I heard, that Spangler Engineering had drawn something up. I don't know if that ever got to you, or-
No.
That was a while back. I think it was before I was in this position.
Yeah, I've been distracted, a lot of the issues, but yeah, maybe I need to get back on there and follow through to see what, you know, where we're at with those lighting back there, too, so the cameras show up nice at night.
But to your question, Councilman, and Councilwoman Gonzalez made this point, I think there was a difference, as I've been explaining, a difference in philosophy when it comes to what the cameras should be recording. I think when the restroom facilities were put in, that was a fairly large expense to the city. We were having issues with vandalism, people breaking into those after hours, and there was the thinking that we put cameras on those, and maybe to the unfortunate exclusion of other facilities in the parks. So what I've asked IT to do is look at where we have opportunities to place cameras that cover more than just a restroom, you know, that cover the restroom, that cover the playground, that cover a nearby pavilion, that cover areas where we know there are people, right? Because if we even get into a situation where we can insure anything in the park, and my understanding is, we first broached this topic after Hurricane Ida, and there was a question about whether our playground equipment could be insured, and my understanding was we were told that playground equipment is not insurable. But yeah, we should have eyes on our parks, not just to prevent people from, you know, arson, but also if there's an incident on a playground, we'll make sure we have video of it so that we can figure out what happened and address whatever issues there might have been that caused that issue, that injury.
Yeah, Charles, since we're talking about cameras, I would like to review the camera room to see exactly what the cameras are looking at in Mooney Park.
Okay. That's, I believe those cameras are being fed to the police department to dispatch, so we just need to set something up with the chief.
Okay, yes, I'd like to do that, because this was going on, since we're talking about cameras, we had an incident in Mooney Park, and this is what was said by the police officer. The cameras don't work. That was what the police told one of the ladies. The kids started out fighting, then the parents had a problem. One of the ladies tried to run over another lady in the park, and she said, well, look back at the cameras. The police officer said the cameras don't work in Mooney Park.
Was this recently?
Yes.
My understanding is those cameras are operational. I know there was a point in time where I think a piece of equipment was struck by lightning or something like that, and they were down for a while, but my understanding is those cameras are up, and then IT routinely goes out there and makes sure they're up.
Okay, well, Charles, I heard you say, you don't know if the limbs are cut on that tree or not. I'm just going by what you say. So, I'd like to see the cameras myself, so I can sit here and say, the cameras working or they're not working? That's why I asked you, let's do this. So, could you set up something?
Yes.
And I'd like to bring Ms. Lisa with me, too.
Okay.
I won't worry about nothing happening to me at the police station.
We may also be able to do it through the IT department. I think they have access to the feed as well. So if you just want to see that the cameras are operational, that might be more convenient.
I'd like to see both of them, the IT department and at the police station, because this is two problems we have in, Charles, and I was hoping one of the council person would say something. This had happened a month and a half ago, and now we rushing to put this back together. And I like what Councilwoman Gonzalez said, that we need to have this back up for the summer. It's amazing how when it come to certain parks, how we move quickly. And Councilman Sam didn't say nothing. In Jackson Park, they stayed down a long time, and God knows, I don't want nothing to happen in Mooney Park on no term. I asked for cameras in the park for the safety of the kids. I asked for cameras in the park because I don't want to replace nothing in the park. Nobody sat here and said, look how much taxpayers' dollars we're wasting on this equipment that we didn't already paid for. Councilman Sam did say, seem like we ought to invest in more cameras. Jackson Park was a prime example on what we need to do. Tracy said about the insurance. Campbell said about the cars. It's amazing how the audience standing up, asking questions, that, and I know you just got here, and so a lot of folks don't understand, it used to be Lacy sitting in Charles' seat, that you don't have the right answer for these questions. But we can't keep just throwing something out there and not knowing. If I don't know something, I will tell you, I don't know, let me get back with you, and I will have an answer for you. That's what I want to start here. We can't keep rattling on and on and on and getting nowhere. We need to know exactly what's going on. My concern is the kids in these parks, so please, let's do a better job. I would like to see the cameras before the next council meeting, please. Thank you.
So there way we could budget for some extra cameras when we have our budget meeting?
Absolutely. I think Rick would be happy to put together an estimate for cameras and bring it to the council so that we could have funds in the budget specifically for that purpose. Absolutely.
I mean, adding the heads after all the system there isn't the pricey part, you know, so I mean, I don't really know why we don't try to add as many heads out there as we can physically add without, you know, being too overly-
Back in the bank.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, they're not that outrageous these days, so, I don't know.
Well, that was something I would like to see done, the help, but then on the back end of it, you put the cameras up, we need the eyes to be able to watch what's going on through the camera.
Make sure they're working and up and running and-
All right. I make a motion to approve Resolution number four.
Second.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye. Resolution number five.
A resolution regarding referral of the February 10th, 2025 incident regarding Bobby Ray McCaskey to the Louisiana Attorney General Office. Councilman Andrews.
Everybody know about this incident that took place back, a few months back with the Hammond Police Department and Mr. McCaskey. I'm making a request to the Attorney General's Office that this be, if they take a look into this to see what necessary action they need to take place moving forward with the Hammond Police Department. I know that there are a lot of people that are asking questions, a lot of people asked questions of me. I tried to provide answers that I'm able to at that point. I do understand that this went before grand jury. I do understand that a few weeks back, that some information was sent to the FBI. But I'm requesting that we look at it another angle as well, that way we can get some answers to some questions, because it seems as if nobody from the administration side is saying anything. And I understand that, and the reason why I say I understand that, because being previous law enforcement, I do understand what you're bound to, but someone should be making some type of comment with something. So, that's why I stand it right now, and let me say this here publicly, because I know that some people are going to run with this a totally different way. This is not personal. This is business. It's not personal, I'm gonna say it again, this is business. Just like the officers have to answer to the chief, just like the chief has to answer to the mayor, I have to answer to the constituents of Hammond and the constituents in District One, and I'm gonna say this again, and I'm speaking in clear English, that this is not personal, this is business.
Stanley Campbell, District One. I have a couple of questions regarding, I think it's a really good idea. First, I want to thank you, Mr. President, for actually putting this on the agenda. I think actually bringing eyes to it and actually keeping it out there in the forefront, because in this situation, it constantly keeps fading away. There are several, I mean, men from this community that have faded away, and you'll never know what happened to them, because those investigations just stopped. And this one situation, just my situation, I can kind of tell you guys kind of how I felt about and how I actually ended up being so passionate about it. This was like maybe the third situation that I personally watched and paid attention to. And when I saw it start to fade away, I kept saying, why won't somebody do something? Why won't somebody do anything? Why isn't somebody doing anything? And I woke up one morning, and I realized that I was someone. So, I tell people, basically, if they can do the same thing, if people in our community, if we all wake up in the morning and realize that we're someone, and that change that you're looking for to happen actually be that change, and that's kind of what got me passionate about this situation. But there's other, there's a couple of different other angles to it also. I understand we're working that angle. Can we still work the angle of actually trying to get the administration to comply? And I wanted to ask Mr. Andre, is there anything in the charter that could force the administration to comply with a subpoena or an order from the council itself?
Comply with what, Sammy?
A request, one, a request for the police chief. My request last time was to have the police chief to actually come to a meeting and to discuss it. I understand that maybe it's an IA investigation or something- I understand that maybe it's an IA investigation or something like that, it's been, it's been over 60 days now, you know what I mean? And if you look around and you call other law enforcement offices and you ask about how long that actually takes, we're, we're right in that area of where, you know, those, those, those things should be ceasing right about now. And we don't want them to use that angle of it's, it's under IA investigation, that's how it fades away. But is there, is there, is there an instrument that we can utilize?
Well, well, generally, the charter provides that the administration, the mayor supervises and directs city employees and the council doesn't. So, that's a, that's a broad question, Stanley, as it sits right now, the council can't direct the chief or any city employee. That's under the executive authority of the mayor.
Okay, that's, that's, my question was under investigations. Under the Charter, Section 2-06, it says, "The council, by favor of a vote of at least two-thirds of its authorized membership, may investigate into the affairs of the city, the conduct of an official, officer, employee, department..." Hold on, it went away. "...department, office, agency, for the purpose of, for any purpose, and may subpoena witnesses administer oaths, take testimony, and require the production of evidence. The council may provide by ordinance for the punishment as a misdemeanor of a person who willfully and refuses to obey such a subpoena or request for evidence."
Yeah, I mean, that's been discussed several times, the council can vote to have an investigation, a two-thirds vote, yes.
Well, that's, that, that was my question, my question was, is there an instrument that we can utilize, that the council can utilize to make, to compel the administration to do just that, for him to come here and to answer questions?
Well, you just stated it's in the charter.
Okay, yeah, that, that was my question.
They would, an open investigation has been brought out, a previous, yes, an open investigation.
Okay, since we haven't gotten any, any conversation or any answers from the administration, have you had any contact with the, with the administration or any department heads or the mayor himself regarding litigation defense on this case?
No, you meant about civil litigation?
Yes, or a, a, any type of litigation dealing with the Bobby, Bobby Ray McCaskey situation?
Well, I'm aware there are criminal charges pending.
Have, have you had any conversations with any, any of the administration?
Mr. President, I, I mean, I'm reluctant to be here in an open session, question and answer with the city attorney on legal matters, but I have not been involved, I'm aware of the criminal matter that's pending with Mr. McCaskey. I'm not aware of any civil litigation that's pending.
Okay, but have you had conversations with the administrations regarding civil litigation defense?
No.
Okay.
All right. Anyone else have any questions or concerns on this item?
My, I guess I'm just trying to clarify, because I think that this, the attachment, yeah, it's up there, is a little... Being a lawyer, I think it's a little vague. We, are we asking the Attorney General to give a review for criminal investigation of potential prosecution of Mr. McCaskey or the police department? I just think the way it's worded is a little vague. I, I, I mean, what are we asking them to do? From what I understand, people want to see the body cam footage, that's not what this is. So, what, what is the intended purpose of asking the Attorney General? And also, I guess to Andre, what does the Attorney General have the power to do? They give opinions, right? We ask them for opinions.
They, they could, they could have a prosecution, Attorney General could, if they're aware of any violations, they could.
Okay.
So, so they have requested the body camera footage and we have it, and it's just not, it's, it's just under investigation, is that, that's what's going on?
I'm not, let me just say this, I'm not directly involved in, in these, in these matters, I don't know.
I, I went down to the Hammond Police Department, this was about two weeks ago, and what I was told is they can't provide me the information, and they, they sent me over to the mayor's office. And I reached out to, to you, Charles, I think I left you a message, I was trying to get some information on it, they said it's not in their system.
Did you do a public records request for that?
That's, that's, that's what I was trying to get in contact with Charles for, so I can actually do a FOIA request.
Okay, so you hadn't did a, a formal public records, okay, all right.
But I'll save you the time, there's lots of people who've asked for this, not this one, but lots of body cam. Anytime there's an open criminal charges, then it's with the DA, and the DA is the only one that can release it, from what I understand. I've had this conversation with Andre about other things. So, the city won't release body cam footage that's been sent to the DA for prosecution, is that correct? That's a correct statement, not as to this one, but in general. So, they're not going to give it to you with a FOIA because it's, went to grand jury? Is that what you said? I didn't know that.
Yeah, it went to grand jury, and that's basically why it's worded the way it, it is worded here. So, I'm looking for a start, and this is the start.
Can I ask y'all just one more, one more thing? You ever been at home and you hear loud noises, you're home alone, and you hear loud noises, and you get a little eerie? What's the first thing you think? You think the worst, right? You think the worst, that's kind of what this situation kind of is. It's an eerie situation, you saw it, and you automatically thought the worst. And currently, right now, the administration is leaving you in fear versus somebody walking through the back door or your husband or your wife through the back door and saying, hey, it's just me, baby, it was just me, and you're like, oh, okay, good. I'm looking for that for myself and for the community, you know what I mean? I want to be okay, I want to know, okay, it's not what I think it is. And the way, just the temperature of policing nationally currently right now on the transparency level that we're not seeing when it's dealing with black men, I can't take the administration's word that, hey, listen, this is, this is what's going on, you know what I mean? So, the body cam footage or even at this point, a statement from the mayor, a statement from the... I don't, I don't know if Chief Burgeonron can actually be looked at as somebody credible after his last statement, but somebody from the administration stepping out in front of this and saying, hey, listen, I can't speak on specifics, but I can tell you this. To try to give us something, right now we're just allowing people to come up with their own conclusions of what happened, and we're assuming the worst.
If I could just add to that, so there, there has been a statement, there has been a press release where we released information. We, the police department, the city, released information. I don't know which one you're referring to, I think you quoted from the same press release I'm referring to. So, there's a press release out there that talks about what, what, what transpired. It indicates twice that the matter is under investigation, there is a quote from the police chief. That, that's what we've been able to release, given that this is an open investigation.
Anyone else on the public? Thank you, President Kip, for reaching out, trying to do something, and as you can see, we have a problem, it's not going away. You know, I've been real quiet, and everybody know that, but I've been quiet for a reason. What gonna take place? And it's, it's a habit, it's going on in Hammond a whole lot. Nobody gonna see the cameras. When the police officer do things wrong, the cameras don't work. You're not gonna see the cameras. When Lionel was shot, the lead detective didn't have no camera on. That would take place. In this situation, you're not gonna see the cameras. The body cameras don't work when something is going wrong. You're not gonna see the cameras, and nobody gonna say that. That's the problem that we've been having, we spend thousands, thousands of dollars on the cameras. They even sit there and lie to us, when they cut the lights on, the cameras supposed to come on. Somehow, to certain cause they in, the cameras don't even work. That's what's taking place. That's why when you say something, you notice how quiet the room is? It always gonna be quiet. They know the truth, what is going on in our community, this the problem that we're having, that's why it's not being said. I say this, and I mean it with a peer heart. When they get tired of killing in their community, they gonna go to other communities. It's something that we can stop right now in our parks. We're having a problem, and I'm sorry, President. Mr. President said two weeks ago that he didn't want no activities in the park, and he didn't mention that one young man pulled a gun out on another young man and pulled the trigger, and the bullet didn't come out. That's why he don't want no events in the park. When he asked for security, he asked for security for a reason. He don't want that to happen to nobody. Charles, I heard you talking about the, the cameras on the Feed and Seed building, that bothered me. You worried about watching a fax machine, and we worried about watching kids. I didn't hear you say about the cameras in the park, you worried about a Feed and Seed building. We have to be concerned about the people in the community. That's why we talk about the cameras a whole lot. We can't keep buying cameras, and nothing gonna be done by it. So, what sense do it make to buy the cameras? And the only time you can catch somebody when they stealing out the dollar store, them cameras work at the dollar store. That's it, that's it.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Debatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
No.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Reports, mayor's office.
No report.
Counsel reports?
Actually, Councilman Wells, do you mind if I come with you to, to look at the cameras? I like to look at Jackson Park.
No, I don't mind, I appreciate that, yeah, because I know when nothing happening, if all y'all go with me.
Right, I just...
Yeah, well, I'm still... No, thank you.
Oh, man, I'm, I'm good.
Any other counsel report?
Hey, I want to appreciate the administration taking the time about the lighting, lighting situation that we're trying to address and, and improve on the west side of town. I appreciate Charles and the mayor and everyone meeting about that. Looks like we're, we're moving in the right direction, maybe a little slow, but, but it'll, it'll get there, hopefully sooner than later. And I think it was a pretty successful meeting, and hopefully we can start seeing some, some improvements. Thank you.
I have three things, go ahead, Debatio.
Oh, no, he, well, he got a report.
Good afternoon, I'd like to say good afternoon, I've never been here before to talk before, but I have a problem, I live on...
Let me get your name and your city.
My name is John Richard Johnson, Jr. I live here in Hammond.
Okay.
304 South General Persian Street. And I'm having some problems with water drainage, and that's what I want to find out, if there's some kind of plan to do some kind of infrastructure changes in that area. I noticed on North General Persian, I'm trying to get my little section to kind of look like that. There's an empty lot across the street from where I live, right off of Coleman. And there's a lot right next to my house, okay? I have some oak trees that's supposed to be taken down, that started about five weeks ago, they started cutting down one tree, and they did more damage to my yard seemingly than to the tree, haven't been back. I tried not to bother anybody, but it's grass cutting time. It's, it's kind of hard to cut the grass when you can't walk out in the yard even when it hasn't been raining. And so now it's raining, and still can't walk in on the north side of my yard. And it's mostly because that lot across the street from me, in front of that lot, there's been a, a leak there for 10 or 15 years, look like.
What kind of leak?
I don't know, I can't see it, I just see the residue of it, the water comes up from the ditch on the other side of the street. It drains on my side of the yard. I used to have a way that the water drain on the back of my yard, but my neighbor with the empty lot next to me put a lot of dirt there, so all the water drains in my yard, I asked him to clean that, and nothing happened, he pushed it all in the back to the little swell or whatever would get the water out of my property, but that's not happening. So, since the city is taking trees down eventually, while they doing that, it's gonna tear up the rest of my yard, my driveway, and the street is already not draining, so I'm trying to figure out what's my recourse. So, if I waited for one tree to get cut down five weeks ago, when I had either other problems, they took down the tree on the lot next to me, nobody lives there, but they took that tree out. When the storm came and I had a big limb hanging out in the middle of my yard in front of my house over my driveway, the people couldn't take the limb down because they supposed to, couldn't get on my property, but they get on that lot next to me, and they cleaned it up, took the stump out, the tree down and everything. Now, I would rather see it done at my house as opposed to the empty lot. Don't get me wrong, the empty lot could be an eyesore, but I used to keep it up, but me and my neighbor don't seem to think that that's something I should be doing. Him and his lawyer thought it was reliable. He wouldn't keep the lot clean, I was doing it, and now he don't want me on the property, but he won't keep it clean. Then he piles up the dirt and it drains in my yard. My slab is messed up on my house. I just would like to see perhaps if the drainage problem was situated, maybe I could go on and try to improve my home.
Let me get your contact information after the meeting tonight. I'll be over at the Building Planning Department, we, we have a Wednesday morning meeting where I meet with all, we meet with all the other departments, Water and Sewer, Streets, which handles drainage, will be there. They also are probably the ones that are out there removing the trees, if it's city workers doing that, and I can get your contact information to them and hopefully get some kind of solution going for you. If your neighbor's built up his property and has created a drainage issue, that might be a code enforcement issue, so we can also have maybe code enforcement take a look at it.
That'll be great. Thank you.
Yeah, counsel report. Thank you for the drainage cleaning on J.W. Davis, the catch basin, they did do that, they did a good job on that, thank you so much. This last rain, the water flowing real well. Oh, no, no, I, I'm, I'm talking about on J.W. Davis. Oh, it could reach over there too, sir, but, Mr. Charles, thank you for putting the boulders in the park. Thank you for planting the trees in the park. I want the same service in Mooney Park, I've been asking for this three years. Pavilion's in the park. Mr. Campbell came out to the park, he brought his family out to the park about a month ago, and Mr. Campbell see how nice it is out there. We need to start the process going before the summer, I've been asking for this, asking for this. Yeah, we do little stuff, we'll plant a tree, this is what we gave your park, we plant a tree, we put boulders. We need to see more. I can't be up here all my life being a councilperson, and I need to see this being taken care of while I'm in office. We can't cook, can't keep putting it off. That same energy, and this all I've been asking for, from day one being up here, that same energy, we putting in Clark Park, that same energy, we putting in Minnesota Parkway, we want to get this done, this, this what took place at the meeting. Because I told everybody thinking it was a nice meeting, but this what took place. Trying to get it done for Christmas, trying to get it done for Christmas, that's all I heard. The tax dollars gonna go to the parish, and the tax dollars gonna go to the city of Hammond for Christmas. I'd like to get the park done for the summer. That's all I've been asking for, it's not my first time asking for it, and it's like I have to beg for stuff, and I shouldn't have to beg for nothing. I want to be just like every other councilperson up here, when they ask for something, they get a result. That's all I've been asking for, from day one of being up here. Thank you.
Just a quick update for Councilman Wells, the RFP for the splash pad will start advertising on the 10th, so next Tuesday. I'm sorry, this Thursday is the 10th, today's the 8th. And the request for bids for the pavilions, including the large event pavilion, will also start advertising Thursday.
Dang, you couldn't send me no email two days ago telling me... Dang, you couldn't send me no email two days ago telling me this, man?
I, I just got confirmation from purchasing today, so.
Thank you.
Alright, just a few things here. Uh is there any update on the flood study?
Uh no. The last communication I had with them was, was basically that they had submitted um the, the flood study you, everyone saw a few weeks back, several months ago, I guess. They were, they were anticipating initial round of comments any day now, so I can follow up with them and find out if they received the comments. Um a, as the gentleman explained, there's usually a little bit back and forth. They submit, they receive comments, they respond to the comments, they may get more comments. Um but my understanding was that they were expecting comments around this time, so I can follow up for an update.
Any update on the water rate increase?
I am, we're trying to get some comparative rates from other cities, uh the parish, other municipalities that we can present something to the council and the public. Um we had a rate study that was performed near the end of last year. It does indicate that we need to increase our rates, but in order to make that um easy to explain to the council and the public, we want to have some comparative rates to show like where we stack up in Tangierho Parish. I know, I know we previously looked at rates for other services like garbage collection and we've kind of compared it outside of Hammond. I, I want to look at, you know, what does Ponchatoula pay? What does, you know?
About sixty dollar, I think about flat. It's all, they, Ponchatoula
Right.
pays a flat deal all across the city.
Right.
And I think, I think the parish is about eighty if I'm not mistaken. Uh I think we're on average around twenty-five, so and we're the largest municipality in Tangierhoa. So there's definitely something that's out of, out of proportion there. Uh so hopefully we'll have those numbers soon and I can put that together in the package. I know you were asked to see it, um to kind of review it before we present it here, but I'm hoping to get that to, to you soon.
My last question, Charles. Uh the cemetery. Have they put in any requests for anything that they need for us with the upkeep of the cemetery? If for uh, from that department, there's cemetery at the city hall.
I want to say that when we met with Parks and Grounds, which manages the cemeteries, they may have requested a piece of equipment to help with the park, uh cemetery maintenance. That's the only thing I can think of offhand.
And I'm gonna thank the guys that's been uh doing their work uh in the, in the park for me. Uh thank the city for overseeing, getting those boulders put out today. I passed through there. I know some of them guys was upset that they can't get on the ground like that, but it's, it's gonna help out in that area. And uh I see that they in the process of getting ready to start removing those trees that got the fence down and should have a new fence up pretty soon. So we are, we're moving, but I'm glad that we're moving and we push a few other things by a little faster, but I appreciate that. Alright. So I got a motion to adjourn. Meeting adjourned.